Okay, I believe we're set to go now, ma'am. We're ready to record. Call the regular meeting of the Pittsburgh Board of Commissioners for Monday, January 11, 2015 to order and ask for a little silence. Thank you. Commissioner Farrell, would you lead us into that, sir?
My name is Russell. My pledge. A pledge of allegiance to your prior United States, Central America, to the freedom of liberty which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all.
First order of business would be to approve the consent agenda. And I see we have two items on our December 8 meetings and the setting up a public hearing for the annexation of the newly acquired Pittsburgh Forest property. Any changes or anything to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, do you want me to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor of the consent agenda? As it is presented?
Aye.
Opposed? You've been opposed, the consent agenda is approved. And now we need to go on to the regular agenda and approve that. We've got a public hearing on the five of old line of new business and managers update and closed session. Any other additions, changes, modifications to the agenda before we approve that?
Motion to approve regular meeting agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None of the board, the agenda is approved. Let's see here, I have, the clerk has given me no citizen's dispute under citizen matters. Therefore, we can move into the public hearing on resuming request for the used property because we need a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, we are in public hearing and I guess, Mr. Bass, are you going to introduce this player? There he is.
Yes, sir. This is resuming 2014-02 as amended. The proposal was originally submitted to rezone from R-15 to R-10. However, you have in your packet there the amended application to the zoning district of R-12. We had a previous public hearing back in October, but since the application was amended, state law requires a new and separate public hearing, so that's why it's in front of you tonight. I won't go into all the details. Nothing has changed from the previous submission with the exception of the requested zoning district. Same land area, same size. And the primary difference with the R-10 and R-12 was the R-10 district would allow for a multifamily type apartment complex with special use permit. However, that is not a possibility in the R-12 district. The difference between the existing R-15 district and the R-12 district is that you can have duplexes and our pocket neighborhood is permitted by right in the R-12 district. The planning board also took a look at this revised proposal at a regularly scheduled meeting last week on January 5th and is recommending approval of this proposed resuming request. Do you entertain any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board on this one?
Question. Correct me if I'm incorrect, but I'm thinking that there are some other differences in land use available to R-12 versus R-15. And my reading of the chart indicates that medical offices and other professional offices are permitted by special use permit. And can you, is that, am I reading that right?
In the R-12?
Yeah.
I don't have that committed to memory, I'm sorry.
I can imagine.
Yeah.
But it'd be good if we had that document here just to confirm. Okay.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
We have one other. What would be the maximum number of dwelling units permitted in R-12? And would there be any difference in the number of units between the single-family residence type or the two-family residence type?
I have done a rough calculation, but I don't have those notes in front of me. So I would say it was, per grand force, it's 30 lots. Oh, I did put it in there.
Thirty-seven, yeah.
Okay.
Page two.
So thirty-seven lots, but would that translate to dwelling units also, i.e. thirty-seven resident, two-family residences?
The way the table reads, the 12,000 square foot size gets applied to the individual unit.
Okay. So whether it's single-family or multifamily, there's only going to be thirty-seven dwelling units.
Right.
Okay.
At least that's my interpretation, you know, if somebody wanted to argue.
Somebody would have to argue with you?
Yeah.
And if they didn't like your answer, they'd go to the board of adjustment.
That's right.
Okay. It's all that.
Okay, any other questions? Does the applicant wish to address the board for?
I have one question. Could you tell, I'm sorry, Mr. Bass, of what you had told Commissioner Fielco about the alternative? Did you repeat that, please? I mean, break into that.
Yeah, general office, medical office, according to the table of permitted uses, are allowed per special use permit. And the special use permit is a quasi-judicial process, the way it's set up in our ordinance that the town board would have to approve.
Okay, but not special use.
Yeah.
All right.
So not by right. The duplexes in the pocket neighborhood are permitted by right, you know, in the R-12 zone.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we do have one speaker who has asked to be heard on this public hearing. It'll be Mr. Wilson, 233 Churchwood Lane.
Thank you. Good evening. I must admit that I am not familiar with the regulations and the culture of speaking, so if there's any procedure I should follow, please let me know.
No, this is your opportunity to be heard about any concerns or questions you have about the proposed rezoning.
I appreciate that. Clearly, there's one person speaking against and Mr. Hughes speaking for. He and I are neighbors, and as a neighbor, I hate to stand up here and, you know, resist his plans to what he wants to do with his land. But as an adjacent property owner of 233 Churchwood Lane, which is the house directly behind his, which includes the right-of-way easement that will become Churchwood Loop to allow traffic in and out of this, I think that my piece of property and my house and my family will be significantly impacted with the change from R-15 to R-12. Now, the attorney said it's his opinion that thirty-seven dwelling units will be there, and of course, that's subject to legal debate. And if a builder does buy this and it is the builder's attorney opinion that seventy-four units could be built with two cars per dwelling, now we're up to 150 vehicles, figure two ways in, one by my land and one out running as part of Cornwallis Road, that's seventy-five cars potentially per day that would be traveling what is right now a one-story driveway from Churchwood Lane into my house. So I'm concerned about that. And I'm also concerned that the entire neighborhood, as it is right now, is zoned R-15. The subdivisions that we're in, the ten acres behind it, and much of the neighborhood along the 15501 is zoned for R-15 right now. And, you know, if it was zoned differently when I made the decision to purchase in 2010, my decision may have been impacted by that. So I do hope that you take into consideration my thoughts as an impacted citizen of the town, you know, that would feel an impact by this adjustment if a builder comes in and has a different opinion and the traffic does increase significantly to our property. And I do appreciate your time.
Thank you. I just have one, just a second. Chuck this up to curiosity question to the applicant. Mr. Hughes doesn't mind. I'm wondering what, you withdrew your application to rezon this to R-10 and decided that you were ready to do R-12. Would you share with us what motivated you to do that, why you chose to change that?
I didn't think it was a good place for parking.
Okay. So is this your personal decision to?
And the neighbors complained. I try to be along with my neighbors.
Okay, so that's just in a voluntary accommodation to hear in some of the input from the board? I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Okay, we have no other questions of the applicant or the planner. We have another speakers. Do you entertain a motion to go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. We can move to our only order of all business, which is Stormwater Administration Manual Report from the County Attorney. Mr. Wilson.
This is a follow-up from discussion we had several meetings ago about our stormwater ordinance and some kind of a housekeeping we're doing to get the stormwater ordinance to where it needs to be according to what the provisions are. And so this stormwater administrative manual, it is required by the ordinance, and it just took this much time for me to essentially develop it. Although we've moved forward with issuing stormwater permits pursuant to the ordinance, this is still something that we needed to do. I'm not going to go point by point, section by section in the document, which is draft. I'll just quickly go over the highlights. The real purpose of this is to make it clear to developers and landowners what the process is to follow our ordinance to get a stormwater discharge permit. The ordinance is not an easy read, so it's very difficult to figure out what it is that's required. So that's the intent of this manual. So hopefully, if you manage to read most of it, it should read reasonably easily and in decent stages that's inherently understandable by anyone. So if you found anything to be uncertain or awkward or unclear, just please let me know. But I'm still reviewing it as a draft, reviewing it as a draft. It does have quite a few appendices which are not included in this document. I can provide those either way to the commissioners. So bottom line is, there's a lot of legal stuff that's required here in the back end of it. There's technical stuff in the front end of what's required for my review. And in the back end, it's the ASBIL drawings, the operations and maintenance manuals, the declaration of maintenance covenant, which has to be recorded at the county, as well as the ASBIL. So there's some legal barriers in the way before you can get a certificate of occupancy. One of the biggest questions basically for you is the surety piece. We have not required today bonding or surety or performance surety for long-term maintenance of the best management practices. We just have not required that because we just haven't gotten there to decide how to handle that. Mr. Messick has given us some ideas on ways to do that, if we wish to go that route through cash, bonds, there's three methods. And that's something we can discuss because it does put a financial burden on developers or on landowners, as well as myself, and just getting the administrative paperwork accomplished. So moving forward, I would recommend that we maybe wait on the long-term maintenance surety issue so we can see how it's going with these new BNP's getting built. That's my recommendation, but it doesn't mean it has to be what we go with and that we do require construction surety so that, and performance, so that they get built properly. Then we can release the funds as soon as I do my final inspection. And if we are assured that it's built properly, then we can release the funds. There is a provision in the ordinance that says HOAs, homeowners associations, must have long-term escrow. To me, that's a little easier to do because that's only for HOAs. It's not for individuals or single businesses. It's for actual HOAs, which will require some more administrative work, but I think there's a valid reason to do it that way. Mostly based on my experience, HOAs are not aware of the BNP's and they don't have funding when the BNP's require maintenance. And it's a big surprise to them when they realize they have to come up with some money to maintain the best management practice. So it also has a flow chart that I have to look at carefully to make sure it's easy to understand. At first blush, it looked a little confusing to me, so I have to go over it with the consultant jewel engineering helped me put this together with the small contract. And there's a few other things I'm going to look at and clarify. But anyway, for now, it's just for your consideration as a draft. If you, I guess if you like it, the recommendation is to, I recommend to approve it, and then I could come back to you for a final, if you wish, or if you want to keep it as a draft and see the final product, I can do that as well. And I can also provide all the appendices. I have one copy of the declaration of maintenance covenant tonight. I actually have two copies, and the rest I would have to get to you via email or hard copy.
I would like the appendices. And I hear what you're saying about a draft, work in progress. I do have some comments, but I don't want us necessarily to get bogged down this evening because I can easily provide this feedback to you offline in an email.
Sure.
Otherwise, we could be here for a while.
Be happy to take comments, email, and I can come back and describe the comments and describe what I did with them.
Yeah.
No problem.
Something you'll see take on the board?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. One of the things I would note, and I just, this is a philosophical approach to this kind of information, is we've got an ordinance that says, here's what's required, and then this touches on, tries to explain what that ordinance is saying, and then in some cases, I think, is regurgitating the ordinance.
Yes, sure is.
Yeah. And so what I think is a problem from an administrative perspective is if the ordinance changes, somebody's got to remember, oh, yeah, we have the exact same language that needs to change in this other document. So if there's a way not to be redundant, there's less risk of the documents being in conflict with each other in the future. So that's a general philosophical statement that I would add.
And I guess to help me connect the dots here, make sure I'm on the right page, this is an administrative manual that we've adopted that supports an ordinance that we adopted over a year ago, when we put in the juror link requirements for new development, is that right?
That's correct.
On the right subject here.
Yep.
And what this is, is that becomes town law. This is a sort of a how-to manual to help people who are in the business of development understand what they have to do.
Correct.
Including myself, understanding what it is.
It appears to me that it's somewhat useful in its current form, even though it's incomplete and the board had approved it. So I guess there's a question anywhere in my realm, like it's, what's the sense of urgency that we, the board, finally approved this? Can we wait, can we see your appendices? And are you still using it as a draft to help guide people through their processes?
I have not, I'm not using this at all with the public.
Yeah, okay.
This internal document.
Okay.
At this point, we're at, the way I issue permits now is I tell them what the ordinance says and just say, you know, it's not ad hoc, but it's not well-defined. So the intent here is to be kind of well-defined, including a checklist of, you know, what do I have to submit to the town to get a permit? You know, what's the goalpost look like?
Okay.
So that's the intent of this.
Okay, well, I would say that, no, I understand that. I would just comment that this appears to be a very well-written document. I think you did a good job. Like Commissioner Fielco, I'd like to see it at 100% before we adopt it, unless there's some compelling sense of urgency to do that sooner. And how much time do you think we're talking about now in the time we would be able to take the draft off here and call it a finished project?
I would guess the next meeting or about a month from now. I'd like to try to get this thing kind of ironed out and finished out. But if there's comments from the board, you can shoot them to me over the next week or two. I'll take those and do my own work and finish up the appendices, make sure all the appendices are correct and in good order.
Okay, question. I think my last question before I go on to others is, would it be correct to assume that this will eventually get incorporated into the UDO? Is this part of the Unified Development Ordinance since it relates to land use management?
Development, yeah.
This will become a chapter?
Correct.
The UDO at some point.
Chapter, article, whatever, the UDO.
Okay.
Yeah, I had been, isn't that correct, Stuart? This is a stormwater ordinance, it's kind of development related, where it would fit in there nicely?
Or is it the ordinance, not the UDO?
The ordinance.
This is the administrative manual that, so this would not be?
Which is a requirement.
Yeah, this is more like a policy document.
So it would not be a UDO?
Yeah.
This is a how-to, could help people walk through the process, it would not be a UDO, okay.
Our stormwater ordinance states that we will have this document, and basically, it indicates that we will provide applicants with the requirements of an application, the submission schedule, the fee schedule, a copy of the ordinance, and then instruct them as to how and where they can gain access to the design manual, which is the state BNP manual. So it has those five requirements.
Okay, well, I guess I, my preference for action tonight would just be to, as we've already done, and you've invited us to email you any comments we have and let you continue to refine the document and bring it back to us two weeks, a month, when you, you're comfortable that it's ready for final review. If that's the consensus of the board, does everybody feel good with that?
And with a special look at the surety issue, it's our choice. It's not a requirement.
Yeah.
Long-term maintenance for BNP's.
Yeah, having wrestled with those, I passed, you know, I might want to include Nancy and Mr. Messick and how you, who's going to be the custodian of, you know, of letters of credit and bonds and whatnot, that who's going to keep the calendar on when those things are expiring? Someone, you need to figure out that level of detail of those things. I have the experience of losing track of one, and it wasn't a good experience, so. Anyway. Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Wilson?
Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Is there any other of all business, or one item of new business is the wastewater allocation request from Walker Auto Parts? Mr. Bass, may I address this one?
This is an allocation request for wastewater based on our adopted policy. This is a small request of only 125 gallons per day to serve a approximately 6,750 square foot retail building. And the proposed site is actually just across the street here, the Foodline Shopping Center. And you have in the packet there the request letter, as well as some information spreadsheet there with previous allocations granted and just the plot plan there of the site. The recommendation is for approval of this wastewater allocation request in the amount specified. The site plan has been submitted and is currently under review, and we expect that that should be on the board's regular agenda session sometime next month for review and approval.
Okay. I don't have any questions about this one. Is any other board member have a question?
It's the proposed use.
It's the Auto Parts store.
Okay, gotcha.
Step recommendation is for approval of this. Do you entertain a motion in effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Undeposed, that allocation is ordered. Thank you. Let's see, that brings us to managers capital projects. I didn't see anything in the package on that, so I guess we'll do it for the night.
Just as a reminder, you have scheduled a February 2 retreat. Uh-uh, that's on Monday. And you scheduled that with David on 8:30 a.m. until into the atrium probably before 4:30 or so, or whenever you feel it's appropriate to break. At this point in time, unless I hear otherwise, we're planning on providing a lunch that doesn't have to be very greasy, like subs or something along those lines, if somebody has some other suggestions for a certain way. You'll recall that we are seeking assistance with providing some input regarding our wastewater treatment plant. And Fred and a brave team of advisors have met and reviewed some proposals, and they'll be interviewing possible. be interviewing possible contractors on January 29. January 29, PR interviews still scheduled?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, 10 o'clock and 11:30.
Okay. So we'll be providing feedback on that. I think we've received two applicants, and we may look at a third.
We received four, and we selected two.
We'll select to review.
To review.
There's a third all.
If there's a problem, we got a third all.
Yeah. Thanks. So moving on.
Good morning. Sorry, I was writing, I didn't, what was that application of?
That was a, I guess, an RF, a request for qualifications for a firm to assist us with potential upgrade or expansion issues with our existing wastewater treatment plant. Locally, on a smaller level, we've had two breaks, two water main breaks slash leaks since the last time we met. There was one in mid-December in the traffic circle, and then there was another one just this past week on Thompson Street. The one, the one at the traffic circle, the leak at the traffic circle was repaired, but we're not really satisfied with the surfacing job in there, so we're going to try to work out another, I don't want to call it a patching job, another resurfacing job, be on the admin side of the circle, the admin building side of the circles, a bit of a funk there, and I think we can do a little bit better than that. The one on Thompson Street, there's a small patch that we had to open up to repair, a water service, a leaking water service, and so as soon as the weather cooperates, we'll be fixing, we'll be fixing that one as well. In both cases, our crews did a pretty good job of catching up and fixing them in not really optimal conditions, so.
Kind of a quick question, did that, did the one at the circle have any relationship to the Hillsborough Street project, or was it farther down?
No, that was not a, not a direct relationship to any of the work with any of the new transmission line.
Yeah. Farther, it was farther south than the circle and that.
Yeah. It was kind of a leftover line there, so probably where there's a bit of a spaghetti bowl as far as lines over in that area, and smaller ones, and this one, this one suffered some similar to what we're having in some of the other areas, it's just that time of year when things kind of wear on the hardware and the leak springs and the top side. We have internally, as far as staff is concerned, we've completed, we've completed some performance reviews and individual strategic planning with, with department heads this, over the course this past week and a half. And I think key to that really isn't so much a performance review as it is a strategic, individual strategic planning session with each department head to try to key in on some of the things that we want to work on over the course of next year. And we take then some of that information and hopefully feed some of that into some of the discussion that we'll be having at the retreat, but then overall, really kind of looking at ways to focus on the strengths and the weaknesses in what we do here on a daily basis. So really good, I think, across the board. We had some really good conversations, and I think we've got a really good team that's been working for us here, so really looking forward to next year. I have, if you recall it, I think maybe the, I guess the last time we had met was the first December meeting, and we discussed briefly Pittsburgh Place, and talks are continuing with Pittsburgh Place and what they want to do with that property, and Mr. Messick and I have been meeting with them over the course of the next couple of weeks and coming up with a recommendation on that. So that process, at least in one shape, kind of appears to be ready to move off-center a little bit. We've got some other development projects in process, and we're looking forward to reporting out on those, but we have to let those perk, relate a little bit. And then also too, I would point out in your packet, it was discussed at a previous meeting, the date of the Christmas party, the Christmas parade, the date of the Christmas parade. And we managed to collect some dates in the area, Christmas parades, and certainly if we need or would like to review how we fit into that, then certainly that's open for discussion, but maybe for future reference, at least we have that information ready to go for when it's appropriate. And also too, I'd point you, either packet, two other items, one being memo from the finance officer requiring some information that we should have from the school of government on some rate study, and I think there's, there's been some good work that's been put into that, and we'll be having some discussion on that probably by the next, maybe.
But it's on the 26th.
On the 26th.
It will be ready then.
And then also too, Mr. Royal had included the executive summary from the Jordan Lake partnership application. I think we've reported out on that a few times in recent meetings, but I know I have to read this stuff repeatedly in order to stay on top of it, and I think if anything, it's a good way for us to do that with that piece. And with that, I would step back and entertain any other comments or questions that you sent to the board on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I thank Ms. Empley for her moving the law forward on the rate issue. I appreciate that, the board here in from the 26th. Any questions for the manager on any of that? EDC updates? I don't have anything. There's an EDC board meeting tomorrow morning, so I'll be at that, and some things may emerge from that that I'll share with the board, but I don't have anything new as we speak. RPO, anybody have any kind of thing to share on that? Okay. So Waste Advisory has been sort of quiet. Has anything sparked up on that with the new county board? No? Okay. Fairgrounds?
Okay.
Downtown Merchants Association?
The PBA, as I think Beth mentioned several meetings ago, was, is very interested in doing something with the Christmas parade date. It is on a first Sunday, and they'd like to, their preference would be to move that to the second Sunday, so that they could have two events. They think that the Christmas parade actually takes from their first Sunday, so perhaps it's something we could discuss at the retreat, see what we think.
Yeah, that'd be good.
They, yeah, because they reiterated, reiterated that at the last meeting that I attended.
Yeah, they basically said that if you have it on a different date, then that survives the two events that draw people downtown, but it's having a common one, and that's a really important time of year for merchants.
I thought I heard one comment that moving it to a week later was too close to the holiday period. A lot of people were already, you know, the holiday travel plans and whatnot, so maybe the Saturday before, I see there's already a couple of these fellow agents doing it on Saturday the 6th. Perhaps that's, again, our short list of things to consider is having it the day before or Sunday, for, to get suggestions. Again, maybe the retreat is a good place to hash that out. Okay. Any other updates about any of that? Okay, we have Commissioner Concerns, and then a closed session. Before we get into Commissioner Concerns, I would invite any commissioner who would like to ask me questions about the recent letter to the editor that I wrote to. Do that during the Commissioner Concerns portion and not save that for the closed session. I think the closed session is specifically set aside for the attorney to offer us an update on pending litigation and any discussion about the letters that I have written to the press more appropriately discussed in open, open session, so I invite you to, if you have questions to ask them with me now, I'll do my best to respond to them. And with that, we will go into Commissioner Concerns and ask Commissioner Farrell first to offer his concerns.
I don't have any concerns right now, other than the paragraph, I just got the email because I had a problem with my email, but a question about going in closed session, I, if this is a personnel matter, it should be in closed session, shouldn't it?
Personnel, but we're, we're like officials.
To what extent would it be a personnel matter?
The mayor, any comments on this? I mean, have we not gone to closed session before? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable doing that. If y'all have questions, I mean, ask them now, I'll be able to answer them.
I'm sure I have questions. Like I said, I just got the information about an hour ago, so I'm not too prepared. I did not have email, like I said, since just before Christmas.
Okay. And then I would also extend an invitation to anybody who prefers not to discuss it in an open session, I'd be happy to schedule one-on-one meetings with anybody who has any concerns about anything I've said communicated to the press. If you'd rather not discuss it in open session, I don't think it's appropriate to do it in closed session, I'd be happy to be with you one-on-one at your convenience, so if you want to, we can do that.
I don't, I don't think it's necessary to go one-on-one with it, but I do have some concerns with what I've just read regarding, you know, that I understand the mayor is supposed to be a part of this board or part of this town, and I'm not, I'm a little discouraged about the competence in our staff or the competence the mayor may have in the board. I'm just really confused on some of these articles.
Okay. So if you, if you want to take more time to absorb that information and ask your questions at the next meeting, I'd be happy to do it then, too.
I have a comment. I don't understand why we can't have that, discuss that in closed session. Is that, would there be an option for us, Mr. Messick?
Yes, ma'am, I think it could be.
Because I do have some concerns with both of those.
Excuse me, if the issue is the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, appointment, or removal of a member of the public body is not to be considered in closed session?
Well, I think some of the things that were said in there is related to personnel. And I don't think that that would be appropriate to be discussed other than in closed session because it is linked related to personnel. At least in that letter, according to what was written, it did reference personnel.
I defer to the attorney, but we don't have, we don't have that on the agenda for tonight as an item. We didn't amend the agenda. If you want to, if you want to pursue that in closed session, I'm happy to do that to the extent that I remain comfortable, but I reserve the right to curtail the discussion if I think we're violating the open meetings law and discussing things that would be better to discuss in open session.
So I don't have a problem with the open meetings law, but if it's personnel, it wouldn't be fair to talk about personnel issued in the public, and according to what was written in the letter, it is in reference to personnel in some portions of it.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just proceed and go through Commissioner Concerns, and anybody who's got a question they're comfortable asking, ask it. If you're not comfortable, hold it for later, and like I said, we can, we can take them one at a time, and it'll depend on your comfort level and my comfort level and the attorney's comfort level about whether or not it's an appropriate discussion for a closed session or it's more appropriate to discuss in open session. So let's just, let's just take it one step at a time, and we'll just move through it that way. So, Mr. Farrell, you have anything else?
I'm not, no, I'm not.
Mr. Bowley?
I don't have anything.
My concern and interest is a status report on where we stand with our concept for reviewing the small area plans. I know we had set that as a priority to accomplish by the end of the year, so I just want to know, are we close? Will we be seeing something soon? Have we been able to make progress on that?
I know I said I could do that without any problems, but.
I don't think you said that. You said there would be problems.
Yeah, the past couple of months have just been jam-packed, and so I actually had a conversation with our consulting firm that's working on the UDO last Tuesday, I think, and we brainstormed some ideas, several options, and they're in the process of fleshing something out and, you know, get, get something here and writing within the next week.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Baldwin?
I don't have anything particular, but I did have one question, and I think we can talk about that in public regarding the comprehensive plan. You said that town did not have a comprehensive plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Why do you say that town doesn't have a comprehensive?
Well, it's, because I've personally never seen it. I have, my, my history and experience comes from another municipality where I actually participated in preparation or review of a comprehensive plan. Minor role in that, reviewing chapters on adequate public facilities and sustainability and the like, and when the term adopted comprehensive plan appears in a document before me, that brings to mind, you know, that 200 and some-page document that I had the opportunity to participate in in a previous jurisdiction. We got a memorandum from the attorney today that, where he outlined the North Carolina statutory definition of the term comprehensive plan and how it relates to municipal governments, and I now better understand his characterization of comprehensive plan with a small C as opposed to comprehensive plan with a big C. And I can see how that distinction made it, may have made him comfortable in accepting text authored by the developer's attorney and put into our ordinances. He may have, as one attorney to another, found that that was a comfortable thing to do. Although I think they, and it helped me get a little more comfortable with it, but I still think that when you use the term adopted comprehensive plan, the memo the attorney provided would have been much more helpful if I'd have seen that a month, a month and a half ago, so that I had that information. It would have saved me an hour looking through all my files and folders for a plan that I thought I edited inadvertently, fit to read and discover. So I went through the town's website, looking for the adopted comprehensive plan, I went through all the folders where I have collected our various land use planning documents, looking for the adopted comprehensive plan. And I arrived at the conclusion that we didn't have one. And then later, did I get, did we see the memo that explains how attorneys talk about comprehensive plans? So that's how I came to the position that I took in that letter that I wrote. And I still, you know, would say that we don't have a adopted comprehensive plan, capital C, now based on Mr. Messick's explanation, I understand that the collection of all of our various land use planning documents, whether that be the land use plan, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance, the stormwater plan, all of those, according to general statutes, can be characterized as our comprehensive plans. But I question whether or not, I certainly didn't, you know, if I was voting on that ordinance and making the assertion that I believe that the. ordinance and making the assertion that I believe that the developer's master plan and the rezoning was consistent with all of that collection of plans, I certainly didn't review all those plans against that ordinance, and I don't know how I would have been able to certify that, lacking the knowledge that that's what was meant by that term. So that's my response to that question. I'm better informed today, but still not happy with the wording in the ordinance.
Statute requires that there be a statement that it is or is not in compliance or consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan is not what you understood it to be. So...
That memo would have been much more useful six weeks ago than it was this afternoon.
But you had no doubt on the issue as to what a comprehensive plan was, because I heard you just explain how you had doubt, yet you expressed in public certainty about what a comprehensive plan is and what it isn't, and went on to say that we don't have one, yet we do.
Yeah, I understand, I understand Mr. Messick's interpretation of that, yeah.
Do you doubt the interpretation or the legality of his interpretation?
I don't doubt that two attorneys would agree that we have a comprehensive plan.
Do you think that we don't have a comprehensive plan that meets the statutory requirements?
I no longer doubt that.
So you agree that we do have a comprehensive plan that meets statutory requirements?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Would you like to retract anything in your letter that states otherwise at this Would you like to prepare a correction from the record?
Well, I'll...
And publish that as well?
I'll consider that. I'll give that some thought.
I'll leave that then. Mr. Messick, do you mind just quoting specifically what the comprehensive plan entails?
I did not bring that memo, but essentially it is any adopted plan of a local government unit that is comprehensive in terms of dealing with the entire planning jurisdiction of the municipality. Cases have said that if you have a comprehensive map that shows the whole territory, and you have an ordinance that applies across the board to the whole territory, then that in and of itself is sufficient for a comprehensive plan under the statute. The word has been there since 1928, and it has come up from time to time, and obviously circumstances today are much different than they were 50, 60 years ago in terms of what planners do and what planning is able to produce. And North Carolina has, what I just told you is the legal standard. Now, obviously, in many jurisdictions, the kind of plan Mr. Terry is talking about is popular, it has a lot of benefits to it, it is used a lot, and we are gradually, I think, evolving to a position where, you know, more of that is going to be seen than not, and the issues of whether or not a proposed development is considered to be consistent, which is also not defined, or not, is going to become more important. And there are many jurisdictions that require consistency as a matter of law before an application can be approved. We're not there, and we may not ever get there, but we're headed more in that direction than we used to be. So it is an evolving process in principle, but as of today, we don't have to have that, and if we did have to have that, you have to make a determination whether it is or isn't consistent, but it's not subject to judicial review, so it is sort of hapalof, or nothing done at all. So it's a step in, at that direction, but it is certainly not a requirement at this point. Planners are much more able to assimilate information than they used to, and they do a lot more things than they used to, and we rely upon it much more than we used to. And we are getting there, but we're not, it's not an absolute requirement at this point in terms of the way in which we evaluate requests. If the plan, if you did have a written plan, then you would also have a request to amend that plan at the same time as you have a request to amend the text or amend the map. So that's the way of the future. If somebody thinks that their plan needs to be changed, they're going to ask you to do that, and you have done that already from time to time. So it is not something that is necessarily an easy process, but, and you all certainly have the call to make on whether something is consistent or whether, in your opinion, it's in the best interest of the town. But that's, at least as far as a comprehensive plan is concerned, that's the state of law today.
Okay, and I again acknowledge that I am today better educated on that based on your legal tutorial that you offered us today. That being said, if armed with that new knowledge, were I reviewing that ordinance again today, I would still stumble over the use in the Exhibit B to that ordinance, the term adopted comprehensive plan, because I think that causes people to ask the question, well, where is that document?
I don't believe it says that. I think it says comprehensive plan, including the future of land use plan and any other adopted plans. I don't think it says an adopted comprehensive plan.
Is there anywhere that we have the list, the things that would be part of the comprehensive plan, because I've never even heard of it either. It seems like if that, we are, if we have a collection of things that we consider part of the comprehensive plan, there should at least be a list of what that includes.
Well, that's for the board to determine whether that is so or not, and the planning board has the right to make that recommendation.
But the statute says a comprehensive plan is what?
It doesn't. It says a comprehensive plan shall be used in order to evaluate zoning requests. And a zoning comprehensive plan can include the land plan and any other adopted plans. You have a lighting plan, you have subdivision regulations, you have stormwater, you have flood hazard, you have all sorts of land use ordinances and regulations that are involved. Or it could be involved.
Not to be argumentative, Mr. Messick, but Exhibit B, first sentence is, "The action taken by the Board of Commissioners in approving application rezoning 241404 is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan." And again, armed with the new knowledge I have, my objection is that the wording of this document might be reduced to just striking that word, adopted.
You adopted the ordinance, you adopted the map, and you've adopted all of these different things. That's the same language that has been used in every zoning ordinance that you all have adopted in the last several years. There's nothing new about that. It's not unique.
Okay, I understand your position. Hope you understand mine.
The statute includes the word adopted.
Okay, Mr. Baldwin, any other questions?
Not at this time, but I'll wait on...
Okay. Mr. Turner?
I was going to talk about the Chadon Conservation Partnership for a minute. We had another meeting on Thursday, Thursday? And I got to attend this time, and I have to say, it's a really good engaged group. Everything that we talked about, I guess, we went through this document that I'm looking at right now that is called Model Natural Resources Conservation Ordinance, and basically we talked about how we would make decisions, Mr. Culpepper and Mr. Royal were there, consensus versus majority kind of thing, and then we started going through this ordinance and making edits, and I thought it was a really useful little exercise, so I was glad to go, and hopefully you guys will get to go again. Everything is on this Chadon Conservation Wiki site, so if you guys don't have access to it or whatever, I'm glad to send it, because I think it's a good group and it's going to be a good little thing for us to get on, so that's all.
Could you send the email to me?
I can afford it.
Anything else? Okay, there are no other Commissioner Concerns. Do you hear a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to GS 143-18.11A3, consult with attorney regarding pending litigation.
Okay.
All the paper? Okay, we will go into closed session as soon as the audience has had an opportunity to withdraw.